Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Okay, first off, approval of minutes, I think we have two minutes to approve. Uh, first one is the minute of what day it was acting, where?
Eleven.
Eleven.
I move that we approve the commission meetings in January eleventh.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any additional corrections or anything anybody wants to add? Okay, Keith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, then we have special meeting minutes, uh, of January fourteenth. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the commission meetings minutes for Thursday, January fourteenth.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, comments, questions, anything? Keith?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, approval of financial statements. Um, I guess I had a few questions on those that, um, I was kinda wondering, um... I see some funds got transferred into the employee pension fund and park district fund.
Mm-hmm. They weren't, uh, there actually weren't funds transferred in, we just, we changed the accounts that they had originally been listed under. They were being paid out of the wrong account, and so we put them to where they were transferred into the right account. And that was with the software company they walked me through.
Um, I guess I have a question. Um, did you ever figure out what the difference between dispersment and like payroll on the employee pension fund was, or?
Um, I guess no, no.
Yeah, 'cause I think that fourteen thousand, that's pretty close to what our, um, employee pension is every year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still really wondering where that came from, like fourteen.
So you, and I apologize, but I thought we had discussed it, I just don't remember.
I guess I thought it once, I knew we were gonna look it up, but...
Okay, so you just wanna know what the dispersment is, that's what is paid out?
Well, I, 'cause I think everything here was based on that being, you know, paid out of that, wasn't it? Um... And then I also noticed like that seventy-seven thousand from the park board. It, uh, I think was listed as, uh, something about for three years.
Mm-hmm.
What was that, well?
That is, that was-
Budget takes for three years.
Yep, that was an amount that, um, originally when it was put in there, um, the payments that the park board received quarterly were being taken out of there, but we don't actually have a park board fund. They have an account in the general fund that it's supposed to be paid out of, and so those were corrected also.
Okay.
Um, Melissa had been paying him out of one fund, and then when I came, I was paying him out of a different fund, and so there was a discrepancy there.
So I see now they're at zero, and I see they have a receipt of twenty thousand dollars for end of January one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where did that twenty thousand come from? Is that from the budget, or?
That will be those that is, yes, yeah, that is from the budget.
'Cause I think our budget had twenty-five thousand.
But they had asked for twenty. I'll have to check on that, I can't remember if there was, if we had discussed that, or I'll have to check on it.
Yeah, like I said, I'm maybe nine point nine percent sure the budget, you know, was given a twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, one other thing is, is I know you brought up about the lodging tax. Do we need to have a motion to take that thousand dollars out of the lodging? Because we put that thousand dollars, it's kind of...
Yep, which then, I was gonna do that.
And now we actually have some money in the lodging, we have about twelve hundred dollars in the lodging, so... So we'll need to have a motion to move it back to the general fund?
Thousand dollars that we initially put in there.
So I'll move to, uh, take the thousand dollars out of the lodging fund?
We're actually in the, uh, finance first, if we get to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, 'cause we're in financial statement.
Okay.
Um, I, I guess generally the way I understand it is when you move funds like that, you know, say, it was in this fund and when you can put in that fund, it should actually come to put in the commission as a vote, to what I understand it, and you've explained it, which is good, you know, um...
I guess, I apologize, I was just trying to clear up some of these things, 'cause you questioned them every month, and so I was trying to get them straightened out.
Well, I'm just trying to get it figured out, you know, 'cause, yeah, so, but, I mean, you did explain it, um, you know. That, uh, so that, that basically on the, uh, employee pension fund, you put in like twenty-eight thousand, some weird number, and that, do you know where that figure came from? It was twenty-eight thousand.
I, I honestly don't know off the bat.
Six hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents is, you know, what you, um, put into the employee pension fund account.
Okay.
Which I thought was a weird number, you know, so, okay, well, we'll, I'll come in and we'll figure it out.
That might be best.
Okay.
I don't, you know, if you, if you maybe come in before the meeting, or-
Yeah, well, I, you know, I-
A little bit of time, 'cause I honestly, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. That helps, um, but-
Well, that's fine. I'm trying to get things clear, so I understand where we're at. Anybody else have any, really a motion to accept the financials as they are?
Well, he, he is making a motion on a different financial, so he would think, he would let that included, I think, on the lodging tax. 'Cause that's part of the financials also.
I think that would be separate, wouldn't it?
Otherwise.
'Cause this is the financial statement that we're voting on now, and then you would-
But if we don't make the motion, it won't be correct?
Has it been transferred back in here yet?
It's still in there.
Yeah.
So it needs to be transferred out.
But this is the financials for January.
Yeah.
It's in February, so if we make the motion now, then it will be transferred in February. Right?
Yeah.
Or am I wrong on that? Or am I thinking backwards?
Well, I guess-
I guess we could put it in here, that'd be fine, I guess.
I don't think you're, I think you can do it either way, you're both correct.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, I move that, uh, we take the thousand dollars out of the lodging, uh, fund and move it to the general fund, so then that way the lodging tax fund would be, be correctable.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, I have a question on that. It shows right now that the, uh, the lodging tax has a balance of one thousand seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents. So if we take that out, there's gonna be a balance of seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents, I thought we had to keep the thousand dollars in there.
It actually has two thousand and some dollars in there right now, so we need to take the thousand dollars out.
Well, I'm just going by this statement here.
To make this correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, once we take the thousand out, this will be correct.
Okay. All right, give a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Keith?
I-
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that correction, do we have a motion to accept the financials?
Make a motion to accept the financials for January.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the financials? Keith?
Oh, yep, I-
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Requests for a rental fee waiver for EMS bank were held on February sixth. Well, I think it's something we've always done, makes sense to me, so we have a motion to-
It was Saturday night, it's over.
Oh.
Oh.
Well-
I move to waive the fee.
If we don't approve it, there's still-
I'll second that.
We're liable for it, so, you know. Okay, your motion and second, any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
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 McLean Sheridan? Come on, Lynn.
Come on.
Oh, golly, you brought, uh, back a-
Well, when you're my age, you need help. All right, maybe you want, um, Adam and Jasper to come up to a, join the conversation?
Go ahead, there's only one chair.
You're gonna come up here.
There's, there's, we can make two chairs. Go on.
When you consider when's left?
Thank you.
Yes.
We're, uh, here tonight, um, our, uh, tests with the state health department have failed for the past year, our HTTM test. And, you know, we've been working on this now for actually over a year.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Tests have exceeded the allowable standards for over a year. And we, I guess, you know, we talked last summer, you guys went to a potassium permanganate process, thinking that that would, would help us. Uh, we've had several tests, one in, uh, November, and now one again in January, and both of those tests at our testing site out in the country have, has failed.
Mm-hmm. Do you have your results from those two tests, or?
I do.
I'm curious what they are.
Uh, the last test in, in January was, uh, point, point zero, point, point zero eight zero two zero.
Okay.
And the one in, in December, I can dig it out of my portfolio here, but it was, uh-
That was what works, right?
Yeah, it was like, uh, point, uh, zero eight two.
Right.
Two two.
Yeah.
And, and the, uh, thought process was that with the colder weather, that that would, uh, lower the, uh, test results to a, an acceptable level, but that hasn't, you know, that hasn't helped any. So we're asking the city to consider, you know, the, uh, chloramination process, and, and you're, you're familiar with it, of course. And, and maybe we could have, uh, Adam and, and Jasper explain the process as they see it.
I guess maybe a little bit of history. We, uh, at the end of the water plant project, um, went through a, a period of time where we had some results that weren't real great. Um, then we went through the, the flood of, of two thousand eleven, where, uh, the city of Washburn also failed their, their results and had to send out notifications. At that time, we had designed a system, um, bid a system and installed a system that could feed, uh, chloramines. In the end, it was decided that it, that the city wouldn't feed chloramines. So this isn't anything new. Since then, um, you know, the results in the city have been pretty good. Lynn's been struggling out in his rural system to, to meet the regulations. Um, the city's tried, um, a product called Claritas that help, um, more or less cleanse the distribution system and also, uh, potassium permanganate. So tried a couple of different products, and, um, Lynn's back here requesting that the city, you know, try chloramines. We, the original bid for the, uh, the project, we kinda learned a few lessons, we tried to do it kind of the, the cheapest route we could, and we ended up getting some pumps that didn't work really well, so we had put together an estimate, to put it in some new words, but, uh... And most of that estimate that was put together, I think it was about nine thousand dollars, is to get good pumps that will work for this application. I'm not sure if you have anything else to add to the, to kinda where we're at today. I haven't been involved in the, other than the meeting last summer, there's, I know, been some other meetings that I haven't really been involved with.
Well, the, uh, you know, the, really the big issue is the turbidity in, in the river. And, and I think Washburn failed either one or two tests last spring, about a year ago, is that right, Adam?
Uh, yeah, we had a high sample, it's not technically a failure until the, uh, until the running annual average is a failure. And our running annual average was still good, but we still had a high sample and had to do an OEL evaluation, which is, uh, like, it's like a danger zone, um, analysis of your, uh, system.
Right, and, and your last, we did a, one, one, in, um, January, when we did the testing at our sample site out in the country, uh, at, at the meter pit, it was, uh, point, uh, point zero four two, which isn't bad, but, you know, the one or two tests that failed last spring, actually, because you guys were way over, it put us, because we're out in the country, it put us almost on the moon as far as the, uh, our sampling numbers.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember how, how high your sampling numbers were back then.
Our highest one got to point one three?
Yeah, point one three zero.
Did it?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's when you guys had the high one, and, uh... And so then the locational running average is, throws its way out, you know, to try and, to try and get our averages back down.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, I, I guess kinda what I'm looking at, or where I might kinda stand on it, is, you know, um, or what I'm thinking anyway, is, you know, the city has done quite a bit over this last year to, to bring these levels down, um, and we brought them down quite significantly, you know? And what I'm thinking is, um, you know, basically you guys might need to do something, like put a few flush hydrants in further at the end of your lines, you know, to flush maybe twice a year.
Well, we, I don't mean to interrupt you, but-
Go ahead.
We need to stop, you know, right there, when, in the summer, when we've got farmers using a huge amount of water, and at the sampling site, uh, several different times, we, we ran out, out of the one site, we ran over thirty thousand gallons just prior to the, to the sampling, and it was at a time when farmers were using a lot of water, so we were actually running a lot of water through the system. You know, so flushing is not going to solve the problem.
I personally think that, you know, we've kind of went through, you know, quite a bit of time with different ideas of what we've been doing. I know Adam took a look at the Garrison plant, and they're doing chloramines, and I did as well. You know, and at some point, we're going to have to figure out that, you know, we need to make sure that this is, we take care of this, you know, 'cause it can't be something that we keep, um, going on and on and on with. Um, so my personal opinion is I think that, that we need to start that process of, of switching over. And that's my, my personal opinion, you know, after, you know, and Adam's done a good job of trying different things and that, you know, and it's, you know... We just gotta make sure they have a good pro, product we're selling them, you know, and, and if they're-
Well, we are selling them a good product.
Well, it's failing tests, though, so we wanna make sure that, you know, it'd be different if, if, um, it was a one random one, but we wanna make sure that it's down there.
This wasn't a problem, Larry, you know, when did the stage two, uh, testing start?
Uh, about a year and a half ago.
About a year and a half, well, yeah, and that's when we started having problems, you know, prior to that, it wasn't a problem.
They didn't have to test prior to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so it's the testing now, and again, uh, adding, uh, you know, this formation project, uh, process is, it's not a, it's not a mystery, it's, you know, it's a process that's being used by a lot of the treatment facilities in the state, and, and working very well.
So the, just to give you some perspective, the only system, other system that I know of on the Missouri River system that isn't using it is, uh, SubCentral. And that's because of the treatment, other treatment processes they have in their water plant, but Willis and Garrison, Riversdale, um, based on our command, they have, you know, kind of all of them down the line are using chloramines.
If I can get back to my original point, um, you know, like I said, basically the city has been doing a lot, and they've gotten, they're down, you know, about half, almost, right?
Uh, not half.
Maybe not half, but, but really, I mean, it's down a lot. And, and like I said, McLean Sheridan really hasn't done anything, I mean, you have a flush hydrant, but really, it's before where your testing site is, so you're not flushing water past your testing site.
Well, we certainly are, because we have, we have people beyond that.
It was not flushing, I mean, you-
Well, but when you have farmers using, say, a hundred thousand gallons in a month, that are beyond that test site, that's a lot of water going through a two-inch pipe. And plus, we have a number of other users beyond that point.
So you're, you're telling me that you passed Peterson's, they're using a hundred thousand gallons a month?
We have an individual user that's at the end of our system, and on the south side, using over a hundred thousand gallons in the summertime.
Are we treating all of your water?
Yes, well, the, the, well, not, not the whole system, just the, um, McLean Sheridan system that's on the Washburn water. We have about a hundred and, uh, a hundred and forty-one users that were buying water, you know, for, from you guys.
When do you normally take your sample? When is the sample taken for this? Uh, this will be in-
February.
Probably next week, or probably not next week, 'cause it's a holiday, but-
No, it is, it will be next week.
Is it? Okay.
We did a special sample just to, because we had taken one in November, and, and we wanted to get some kind of an idea where we were at before the actual sampling in February, and, and so the results that I gave you were, you know, from January.
Well, okay, but, okay, my question is, so that's, you take one sample a year on this?
Every three months, we're on right now.
Every three, it's quarterly. Okay, it's quarterly.
And our running, our locational running average right now are point one oh three, point zero one oh three.
Well, that's because you got high ones before, I realize it's, it's annual running average.
Right, but one of the problems, even if we could get down close-
Even if you get cut in half, you're still gonna be over with the running average, you know, but it's, it's, I understand, it takes a year.
The mandate is to get down, the mandate we have is to get down below that.
No, I understand, I understand, um, but like I said-
There's nothing to say, there's nothing to say that, uh, this spring, if there's a lot of turbidity in the Missouri River, that, that your, uh, samples here could be shoot up higher.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's almost a given, if, depending on the weather and the, and the turbidity in the river, and, and all the weather things that happen.
Right, well, like I said, I mean, I, I mean, I would like to, you know, at least put a couple of, uh, you know, flushing sites in, you know, at the end of the line and try that. And, you know, at, at least we're trying something, you know, in your-
Washing, Larry, we just talked about that.
Well, you know-
We, we just talked, we just talked about it.
Well, bring your fingers up, you know, let me look at your fingers, then, you know, of, of the water that's being used, and where it's all being used at. I mean, not that I don't believe you, it's just that-
We, you know- But we, I've dealt with it, and I've dealt with it with Adam, we've dealt with it with the numbers and everything, and yeah, we might even be able to solve it here in the next few months. But then spring again, you know, chances are we might have that issue again. You know, I guess, uh, Jasper, what's, what's your recommendation?
I think as a, you know, if the city wants to help their secondary user in this case, you know, chloramines is, is the only option unless you're gonna start, you know, bringing in better treatment processes, which, you know, we know the cost of those, I, I don't see another option. We, we tried some, you know, different oxidants, um, a, a different Hawkins product to help clean up the distribution system in hopes that we could feed less chlorine, um, you know, to bring that reaction down, and, um, you know, I, I don't know what else to do, I guess.
You, you know, and also I'm looking at, you know, basically chlorine dissipates out of the water, and people bitch about chlorine all the time. You know, now you're gonna put something in that doesn't dissipate out of the water, and you can't boil it out of the water. You know, chloramines, you can't do that.
Well, I think, my understanding is that, that the ammonia gets eaten up by the chlorine, doesn't it? I'm not a chemist or, uh, you know, but my understanding is that the ammonia, it does actually kinda get consumed by the chlorine, is that right?
Right. It combines with the free chlorine to create chloramines.
And the, the ammonia, I mean, we're talking about a chemical that people, that, that, people use it on their lawns, a lot of your household products have, have the ammonia at a, at a much higher level than what, than what we're talking about. We were up and visited, you know, with the city of Garrison people, and they mix up a fifty-pound bag of this ammonium sulfate in a fifty-gallon drum of water, and that fifty gallons of water processes about two and a half million gallons of water, Larry. That'd be like taking a tablespoon or a teaspoon out of the fifty-gallon drum and throwing a little bit in it once in a while. That's over a period of two and a half weeks on two and a half million gallons of water.
True.
It's a very small amount of, uh, ammonia that's being used.
Oh, would you drink it?
Yeah, you don't smell it, you don't taste it.
You don't go home and take a teaspoon of ammonia?
I don't take a teaspoon of chlorine either.
So, why should the hell is he gonna want this in my water in this town? How's it gonna affect everybody that's right in this town? How much stronger is it gonna be?
Everybody already has it.
Generally-
Okay, Underwood and Washburn, Riverdale, that all gets plumbed all the way up to Underwood and that stuff, they're longer routes. This stuff here is right here in the base of our town, how much stronger is this gonna be for us as consumers right here in town than it is gonna be for people ten miles away?
The difference-
You can guarantee that?
Yeah. The difference between chlorine and chloramines is chlorine is a very strong oxidant that dissipates rather quickly. When you switch it to chloramines, it's less powerful, but it lasts a lot longer. And generally, people that, you know, I've heard you complain about the chlorine smell, actually, when you convert to chloramines, you generally have less complaints about, you know, people smelling, smelling chlorine.
I don't drink this water in town anyways.
Well, a lot of people, and he's right, a lot of people complain about the chlorine smell and some other odors, and I think that this, uh, this process will eliminate that.
I was just wondering how many more chemicals we gotta put in our water, I mean, why can't, why can't there be something done on your line where you hook up out of talent to us, or wherever it hooks up?
Well, you have to understand the process.
Put in a mixing station there, and then from there it goes out, then it, then your troubles would be geared all together.
If we could do that, if we, if we could do that, we probably would, but it has to be done at the time of treatment. It has to be injected, does a large enough supply so that it, it dissipates and does the, the job that it's supposed to do. You can't just put it in the line and send it out.
The problem with doing it at the end of a system or where you feed is that if the disinfection by products are already high at that point, then it's not doing McLean Sheridan a whole lot of good.
But at the point of feed, we're down.
Yes, so you're, you're making that conversion to a more stable, you know, oxidant, you know, at the plant, rather than somewhere down the road.
Um, Colin, you were, I was talking with you the other day, uh, about-
Well, just to address a couple of things, you know, you're talking about, is it gonna be stronger here? Once you switch to chloramination, you're really looking for, you know, like Jasper was saying, when you, when you add free chlorine, you have to start with a higher residual at point of contact, 'cause over time, age, that free chlorine dissipates. Um, so we have to start higher plant to maintain good residuals out in the end of that distribution. With chloramines, it's a different process, you're, you're really looking for, uh, probably, uh, you know, say, a two-part-per-million total chlorine residual, which, as Jasper said, isn't gonna drop off near like free chlorination does. So that's one advantage, um, to that. Um, with, you know, the chloramination process, um, there are some, you know, there's, there's good and bad points. I agree, you know, nobody really wants to add more chemicals, um, that's why we tried some of the options we have with, you know, looking at, we did try, uh, Claritas. We've had great success in other communities, it didn't work here. Um, we've done some trial tests, jar tests with some other products, that carbon was a good one, works great in some applications, did not work here. Sodium permanganate did prove to, to be somewhat effective, um, obviously maybe not to the point it, it needs to be here. But I think we need to look at, as Larry said, look, look at all our options. Now, to me, I haven't seen any data, so I'm just, I'm just throwing things out there, asking questions, um, as far as, you know, Larry talked about a flushing program. And I, I do a lot of- And I, I do a lot of training for North Dakota Real Water, different conferences, and that's one thing I push is established flushing program. And I've asked, you know, different groups, you know, how many people flush? And amazingly, out of a group of twenty people, I probably get two or three that raise their hand that really have an established flushing program. I'm not against, you know, clarify, I'm not against the one to chloramines, but let's look at every option available. And if you can tell me.
What, what other options are available though?
As far as chemical feed?
Yeah.
You're done.
And they've tried flushing.
Other than chloramines.
And they tried flushing, so.
Well, let's reestablish that. Is it flushing or is it just water usage? I mean, are we flushing? Is there buildup in those lines? That obviously, I can turn a garden hose on or run a lot of volume through there, but it's not really flushing debris? And is there debris in that line? I don't know. I'm just posing this question. But if somebody comes to me and says, okay, I've got a documented flushing program that, you know, whether it be once a month, every couple of months, we flush for this long, I, I can see documents that say, okay, I did a flush on this hydrant, this was my chlorine residuals, this is, maybe check pH, whatever it may be, that's documentation. I guess for me, what I've always been told, if, if it isn't documented, it didn't happen. So, I'm just throwing this out there, you know? Is what you're flushing or running through, is that sufficient? I don't know. I, you know, without looking at your whole map of your system, seeing what's there. I guess to me, I would start that, you know, exhaust that option first. If, if we, if you can tell me with a hundred percent certainty that I know we're flushing this out, without a doubt, we're getting fresh water through, okay. I mean, I'm in business as a company to sell chemicals. But I'm, you know, saying, let's look at everything first before we have to add another chemical. Because there are, you know, as Jasper said, you know, chloramines is being utilized more and more throughout the industry, more predominantly on surface water because of issues there. But there are some things that, one right now that the EPA is looking at, that's a disinfection byproduct called nitrosumes. What's it gonna do? I don't know. It could be years before they decide on that. That's one of the byproducts that's caused by chlorination. Is it good? Is it bad? Nobody knows. So we could be adding today, five years from now, or I mean, if you decide to go with chloramines, two, three, four years from now, that might be on the hit list too. We don't know. But it's just, you know, something I wanted to throw out there and something I'll consider.
Yeah. It is, it's tough. I mean, it's the never-ending battle of meeting all the different regulations that you have to meet. And, um, every disinfectant has pros and cons and they all create different byproducts. Doesn't matter what oxidant you're using.
Like gas prevention, you know, we could go to maybe ozone or some other UV disinfection that may reduce that, but.
Ozone has, ozone has some byproducts that we're questioning too. And UV is the best so far as far as disinfection byproducts go, but putting in the UV system is, you know, it's pretty capital intensive, so it's.
You know, one of the other things I would like to point out with chloramines is it's gonna take more watching over that plant than it is now. Because you've got that ratio of chlorine to ammonia that you have to maintain. And if that balance or that ratio gets off. Talking to Garrison, he seemed to think that a lot of that is done digitally. It is, but, you know, example, everything's mechanical. You know, and I'm just using this scenario where you're feeding chlorine here in this pump, ammonia here. Now, if the ammonia pump goes out, it's not quite as big a deal, your free chlorine. If your chlorine pump goes out and you're feeding ammonia, now that becomes another issue.
Your pumps never go off, Colin?
They shouldn't.
Murphy's always there.
And it's nothing to, you know, run, you know, stick our head in the sand over, but it's just, you know, I want you to be aware that there are some things that is obviously gonna require more of Adam's time or the city's time too. Well, I'm talking to McLean Sheridan. One thing that they've stated is they are willing to talk about making sure that we're not in this alone as far as paying for some of it, and also maybe even, uh, a little bit with the water rates and that, because they realize it's not an easy decision.
I, I think, Larry, we have a, no, we have an obligation to, when the standards have changed and, and we have to, um, move forward so that we are, you know, that we are producing water and selling water that's, uh, that's credible. You know, we can, we can't go on for, uh, a year and a half and then continue going on and, and not passing, you know, the acceptable standards. And, and there's probably, you know, there's, and like you said, there's a number, there's other chemicals that you could probably use, but that's how they treat water. It's with chemicals. And, and I've, I've worked with ammonium sulfate for many years. And it's, it, to me, it's a relatively safe, uh, chemical to, to work with. So we, we need to, you know, I, I had Joan, um, print out, um, some information that we've gotten from the City of Garrison that explains the, uh, the chlormization process.
I would rather, you know, have something from EPA rather than from like, you know, hot chemical, but, um, you know.
Well, it's just.
As a reference, you know.
Again, it's a reference to, to the process and, um.
Well, like I said, I guess my feeling is, you know, we should try, at least try something, you know, like, say, flushing.
Larry, we've been, we've been flushing. You know, we did a lot of flushing this summer.
Where did you flush at?
Where did we flush? Out at the, at the Peterson place. And it was at the same time.
No.
And we actually, actually, we flushed at the, um, junction of eighteen oh four and eighty-three, we did about, we did a, um, flush pit there.
That's your only flush out, right?
Right, well, that's just, um, short distance from the Peterson place. And, so we not only, you know, did a bunch of flushing there, but we also, uh, we actually flushed about thirty thousand gallons several times through the Petersons.
Thirty thousand gallons through Petersons?
Yes.
Did you have a flush hydrant there or what?
No, we threw, um, a hydrant, you know, where you.
The thing is, uh, the three-quarter inch isn't really flushing in this line.
Well.
You know, that's usually water.
You can't open up a two-inch line when you've got other people. You can't open up a two-inch line and just let it flush out for, because what happens then, everybody else on the, on the water line is out of water.
Well, I'm not saying that, you know, you have to do it at the busiest time of the year, the busiest time of day.
Well, but we have a, you know, that flush pit at, uh, right at the junction there.
But I see, but I think you need to flush beyond, like at the end of your line, so you're flushing water through the system, not in the middle of it, right after your heavy users. Because most of your users aren't before then, correct?
No, we got Langrim, it's the great south of there, that used, um, several times this summer, used over a hundred thousand gallons. Probably three or four months.
Yeah, but like, you know, is that out of the three-quarter inch line or is that, is it filling out of the two?
Well, when he's filling, he's filling with probably, uh, three, three, three hoses. Yeah, there's not a, you know, there's not a gallon that we open up and open up the two-inch line, but there is a lot of water being flushed through there.
Like I said, I, I realize the importance of having good, you know, quality water that, you know, meets specs, but like I said, you know, we've done a lot. And I'm, you know, my opinion is that we should, you know, you guys should at least try something.
I will say this though, is, you know, we've been, I've been working with Adam. Adam's been doing a good job with that. Jasper, I think's on the same boat as far as what I'm thinking. You know, and, and I realize what Colin's saying, you know? But we've been doing these things, trying to make sure, and yes, our numbers went down, uh, theirs didn't. At some point, you know, we need to make sure we do something. And I wasn't a big fan of this to begin with, you know, but I've done a little homework. I also went up to Garrison and checked things out, same thing with Adam. And I just think that at some point, we need to take the next step.
Well, maybe at some point, yeah. It's my opinion. I, I really think though.
Larry, I'd like to offer something too. I mean, if it's undecided, I'm more than willing to come out, you know, and work with Marlin, you know, at McLean Sheridan, look at, you know, the map of the system and see, okay, what is there a documented flushing program? I'm willing to help out over a weekend too. You know, maybe offer some advice, you know, like you say, without seeing any, I don't know what's all it's done.
Where have you been the last nine or ten months?
Where have I been?
Yeah, where have you been? You're aware of this since the last summer, you're aware of this going on, and now you sit here and talk about this?
Okay.
Larry.
Show me some documents.
Larry, McLean Sheridan, a number of years ago, invested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy into the, into the city's infrastructure. And we have, you know, and we enjoy a long-term agreement with the City of Washburn. We hope that it continues for a long time.
Well, absolutely, and me too. I mean, I told you before, I hope we can sell you more water.
And it, and it's, you know, it's easy to sit here and you should do this and do that, but we've been working with this thing for over a year.
George, you had a comment?
Is there any way we could sterilize that's line? Whether it's set for a week or so or with a chemical limit? I'm just wondering because sometimes.
You couldn't do that because you'd shut everybody out.
Well, I was just wondering, can we put something through the line to sterilize it?
Basically, what this chlorine does, or, uh, what it, what it, the ammonium sulfate does is it, it levels off the, uh, levels off the numbers, whatever they come out of, whatever Adam has at the plant, it'll level it off and, and stabilize it. And, and then hopefully that's, that's the end of the problem. And you guys are, you're treating this thing like this as some terrible chemical. It's not.
You don't know that. If EPA does, if they say carcinogen.
They've been doing this for what, thirty-five years?
And, and if you go to the EPA's website, they have very, very little studies they've done on. They're actually starting to get into it a lot more to study it. I mean, go to the EPA website, look it up. I mean, it's there. But I think, you know, this is a, a lot to consider. I really don't know if it's fair to ask the rest of the commission to decide on this tonight because, I mean, they really weren't prepped for any of this before the meeting. You know, I, I understand you guys had a meeting.
We've been dealing with this for a year.
No, but I mean, you had one like a week ago or something, you and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I wish I would've been invited to that then. We could've, you know, hashed out some more, but.
Well, I asked Adam several weeks ago if, whether, what his thoughts were, and he said he wasn't opposed to switching over. And I think, uh, a lot of the things we do, we go by the recommendations of our engineer.
You know, we have our engineer, we have the water guy here, and myself, and we're all the same.
I've, I've been in the water industry for twenty years. I know, I understand water.
But I'm saying, there's three people here saying that that's what we're recommending.
Okay.
And, and I guess the other thing, and I don't want to bring up a lot of, you know, things that happened years ago, but, uh, there was grant money that was given to the City of Washburn, you know, based on using this, you know, this process by, you know, by equipment and, and part of the design of the plant.
Well, quite honestly, and I, I even hate to say this, but, you know, to get, if you wanna be nitpicky about stuff, you know, basically, the contract says we will provide you with the same quality water at your point of entry with the same water that is for, for Washburn, but we wanna give you better water than that. I mean, we want to. But, you know, but if you wanna be nitpicky about stuff, then so will I, you know? I, I wanna work to get this, I wanna work to get this solved, but I, I don't think it's too much to ask for you to at least try something.
Larry, we've been, we've, we've done a lot of flushing.
Well, let's see your records. You know, it's like.
Well, I don't, you know, I guess I take a little bit of, you know, when someone sits back here in the corner that's been supposedly involved, and now he comes up and says, well, I wanna see your records?
He never said that. He said.
That's what he said.
He said, the, the general consensus is if, is if, uh, you know, you can say all you want, but if you don't have records, it means nothing. You know, records show that you've actually done something. That's why people document everything, you know? I think the city's pretty much documented everything they've done.
Oh, we need, you know, we need your help, Larry, to move this thing forward.
That's where I stand. I mean, the rest of the commission, what, what are your guys' thoughts?
Well, to do this, should we make a motion so we can actually discuss it?
Well, we, we're discussing it right now.
I move that we switch to chloramines and get the process going for that. Just to say one thing too, if people are concerned about cost. Because the cost is swing minimum. Yeah, we've already got some estimates and pitching it over. It's very, I mean, as far as the actual chemical. It's, we figured it out, I think I, I went through based on your actual chlorine usage for, what did I do, February to February? Or last year to this year, based on chlorine use, if we kept that ratio of four, five to one, uh, the cost is reading minimum. We're not talking a lot. You know, so if people are concerned about that, um, you know, don't let that be a factor.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second on that motion. Okay, second calling. We have a motion. We have a second on that motion?
I'll send it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
I'd like to say one other thing.
Absolutely.
In visiting with Jake and, you know, we have agreed to pay for a portion of the cost. And if there's, if there's some additional O and M costs, as we get down the road, we're willing to, uh, take a proportionate rate increase, you know, to work with Washburn.
Well, I really don't perceive that.
Well, but if that, if that is an issue, we're willing to work with Washburn.
And I don't think that's an issue, you know?
And, and I guess I see if, if down the road, if, you know, let's say the EPA comes out and says in three years or five years that, that there is a, a problem with this process, it doesn't mean that you can't change to a more accepted process.
Great. Okay, um, further discussion? Like I stated earlier, I think that it's a lot for the rest of the commission, you know, to, to sit here and hear this and make a decision because this is a pretty big decision.
But that's why we have portfolio.
Well, no, but I'm just saying.
Issues too.
That's, that's my opinion. We should give them a month to think about it.
We do the research. I'm not saying that we have to, to rush into it either.
Right.
But I'm just saying, that's why we have one person kinda doing the research of that and doing the legwork so that that way we don't have to do every portfolio.
So what would be involved? You would have to get this approved by the state and everything else, correct?
It's actually already been approved by the state. I mean, we'll probably resend it to them, but, I mean, we went through this process a few years ago. And by view, it's probably more than I think it is at this point, but. I mean, the city went as far as installing all the equipment, sending out all the notifications to the residents, you know, you know, everything. And then decided to go a different direction at that time, so there is a lot that probably has to be done on that end.
How long ago was that?
I don't know.
I think three years ago.
Three years. Would you have to re-notify everybody again, Jasper?
I think we will.
What, anyway? Any other discussion from the commission? No? If not, take vote? See?
Aye.
Good?
No.
Well?
Aye.
Aye? No. Okay. Okay, it passed, three to two.
Good, thank you.
Hold it.
We appreciate our relationship with the city of Washburne, and we hope that it continues beyond all of us.
And so do we, absolutely.
I'd just like more information, that's.
Well, that's part of why we, Jake gave you the stuff that you had tonight. And, you know, we hope to, you know, as, as time goes on, that we increase our usage with the city, the amount of water that we buy, and we think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us, and I think it's, it's great for, for the city of Washburne.
Well, like we've talked before, and you and I talked, you know, several times, we, we would love to supply you with a bunch more water.
Yeah.
You know, and, and quite honestly, the information we got, we didn't get to, we sat down here, so.
I understand that.
I mean, you know, some, that's maybe something that should have been sent out ahead of time, you know.
Oh, just, I, I got it this, this morning.
Well, I'm not blaming you.
You pointed at me.
No, I, I wasn't like this, I wasn't like this. No, it wasn't you, I was blaming you.
Well, that's how you, Joan, that's how you cover everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Kit, if you ever want to talk about something, just let me know, we can go over anything you really need to.
Yeah, Adam, myself, and Colin all know a fair bit about, fair bit about, about it, so it's, we'd be glad to sit down and talk with anybody else about it.
So do I.
But Larry, I'd like, I guess, as, as, as we get into this, you know, sit down with Jake and Joan and.
Absolutely.
And we can look at what the costs are, and we'll.
Absolutely.
Work with you guys.
Absolutely, I, I think we can work.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My offer's still open, if you need me.
We're gonna hold it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, purchase of highway lights, four of them, lighted item. So I'm assuming this is the four that I have.
Thanks.
Yep.
She gets one.
For what?
For the ammonia feed system?
Well, we.
Is this, is this like, is this two separate bids, two different options, or is it one total option?
No, it's two separate options.
Do they need to take a look at that?
Well, I already started this, I don't need to come back to it. Right now, we don't know how we're gonna exactly do it, so.
I think the final costs, and those are the costs associated with going with the process, and Lynn City is willing to work with you and pay a proportion.
So like, next month's meeting, then we'll find out what process you're gonna decide, so we would have had a month to go over this and learn a little bit more than.
It's basically which kind of pumps and where we're gonna feed it, it's not the.
Well, this isn't something that's gonna start tomorrow, I need these, so.
Okay, highway purchase lights.
Okay. So basically, there's four left, is that correct, no?
Um, yes, we have four left, and Jamie has them at a price of sixty, about six hundred and fifty dollars apiece.
Is that in here somewhere?
Uh, no, because he just called it in on Friday.
Oh, yes. Uh, so it's about that, or is that, or?
Six forty-three oh nine.
Is that installed?
Mm-hmm.
What were they last time we bought them, do you know?
He said they had come down a little bit.
Should we get them?
Motion to attend. So, I mean, it said, we put it in the budget for four more lights.
I believe we did, yes. Okay, so that will finish the highway lights, uh, do we have a motion?
I move that we purchase the highway lights for them.
One second.
Okay, discussion? It's on South End of Town, right, is what you mean to me after, does anybody even know?
Oh, I know, yep.
That one?
Yep, they're the four, the last four lights that are yellow, so they'll switch to the white LEDs.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Um, how come when they put the question, how come when they put the, uh, uh, lights in downtown here, they're yellow? Why do you even have the white ones downtown here?
You guys asking me?
Whoever.
Yeah.
I, I kind of remember a discussion about that at one point in time, with it.
I know.
What, you're talking like Seventh Street?
No, I'm talking about me.
Did they try a white one over here at one point in time? Or was it?
I remember a discussion like that.
Who, Jamie?
Yeah.
Like recently?
Yeah, when you, when you were the last plan, it wasn't that long ago, right?
I don't think, I don't remember me and Sharon being brought up, it was.
I thought he tried a white one over here somewhere, like the one that was.
Well, when we did the highway lights last year, we came down and looked at the white lights to put down here, but you have to, it's a whole new head, it's not just the light, it's the whole new fixture head.
Yeah.
And so, when we, we discussed the cost at that particular time, you guys just wanted to do the highway lights because to do all of Main Street is too much. Also, in the smaller area, the white lights really glow, they're very, I, I felt that they were too bright. I had pictures that I showed you guys about the spread of them for, for downtown, for the amount of lights that we have. And you guys decided to go with the highway, just keep the highway lights for now.
Okay, so, but these lights here are pretty old on Main?
I, as far as like a project to change out the lights on Main Street, we haven't done it since I've been here.
Oh, really? I thought we could change them.
Maybe they changed the.
Or maybe I'm just thinking of the one that, maybe. I don't know.
Adam.
Well, if they're brighter, then we could probably lower it a dollar and a half.
Right. I hate those yellow lights. Oh, well, question, scratch. Purchase of new lawnmower budget item, Kit?
I called Brent, salesman up there, and asked him to get us a re-estimated quote. And he forgot to, and when I called him back on, Friday I called him, he was getting ready to hop on a plane for Vegas, so. So, he figured that everything is gonna be pretty close to that. He can't imagine that it would go up too much to what them two quotes were. Which I do not have anymore.
I guess I would like to wait and get an actual, I mean, we still got time, you know. I'd wait for, like, the natural price, I mean, you know, you say, well, I don't think it's gonna go up, but then it might go up. Who knows, you know, who knows?
But I think we're still under, we put in, what, what'd you say, Joan, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
On that, for that diesel one, it was what, nineteen or eighteen or twenty?
It was under that, it was under twenty.
It was? It was under twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we already got it budgeted for twenty-five, if it's, even if it comes out to twenty, we're still good.
Yeah, but I think we should wait and get an actual, I mean, it's in the budget, so I mean, we can bring it up next month too, it's.
Right, I'm just, I'm just looking at time wise, you know, he figured if we would still get it, you know, by spring or whatever, but, you know, I don't know their, you know, their order deal like that, to, you know, their. They ship so many out to each store, you know, just how they base their stuff on, and then that special order stuff is kind of.
I suppose.
But, yeah, I mean, we can wait too, that's no big deal, I, I think he's gonna be gone all this week, if I'm not mistaken, he said, but.
Apparently, he didn't think it was important enough to get it done, huh?
Like he had party on his brain?
This for a sign in front of the city hall?
Um, that was a budgeted item, and it was, we budgeted up to twenty-five hundred dollars, but I'd just like to start the request, get some bids and see what they have for the signs. Or options.
I move that we get some bids for a new sign in front of the city hall?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, didn't we get a grant for, to do something like that over here, for the forestry board, wasn't there a?
Yeah, that's for new plannings.
New planning, okay, that sign and all, that wasn't part of it? I thought there was another one that we put in, we had to, because we were talking about building a, like a sign or something out on the, on by the highway there too.
No, there's, um, a grant we have for, over there by the entrance down there, to clean up those, and there's also for the one here, and the memorial building, put in new plannings.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion on that? Do you have ideas on who you're gonna ask for bids from, and are you gonna put it in the paper, or what are you gonna do, just call people?
Well, just, I would just call people. I had sent, um, earlier when I talked to Indigo Signs, he had given, I'd sent him a picture of the front of the, of the existing, what we have now, and he said, you know, for a sign to attach onto and stuff, it'd be no more than twenty-five hundred, but I'll check with a couple others just to see what options are out there.
Sure. Have a risk check. Any other discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye. Pledge of securities, I realize that was done last month, but I think Joan just received another letter from, I think it's in here.
Page twenty-three.
So, uh, basically, what we need to do is we need to do pledge of securities twice a year. So Joan and I were talking, we, you know, approved this one now, and then in July, probably do it again, and then we're on the, you know, January and July, schedule after that. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, get that most approved, you got pledge of securities?
So moved.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna jump ahead here to Carol. You've been sitting there so patiently.
Hello. Hello.
You didn't want to fall asleep.
Hmm?
You didn't want to fall asleep over there.
Well, thank you. Just wanted to report that we finished interviews for assistant library, um, with Gina's resignation, without any assistant librarian, so we want to quickly do some interviewing, we're very happy to have five applicants that we interviewed, and we hired two to job share, so that we are a little better covered for vacations and things like that. Pending your approval, the two people that we offered positions to, pending your approval, are Nancy Fuchs and Nancy Hiller. That's it.
I'll make a motion to approve Nancy Fuchs and Nancy Hiller to job share. Part-time at the library, how's that sound?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a, at a what rate? Did you want to add a rate to your motion?
Two.
You can if you want to, well.
You know, I was gonna, when we got to discussion, I was gonna bring that up, about a rate, if that's okay.
Well, I know that we have a higher budgeted rate from when we hadn't experienced assistant library, but we wanted to have a starting wage of ten dollars an hour.
How about, how about if we, you know, approve them as assistant libraries, and then we have another motion for the rate? How would that be? So we have a motion to approve those two, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, as far as the rate, um, my, my thoughts are, and I was thinking I was also with the head librarian, you know, we have a library board, and they have money. And basically, um, out of your monies that you get from your levy, you pay salaries out of that, is that correct? Joan, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. Out of their levy money, do they pay salaries out of that?
There's some, yeah, I'm thinking that there may still be some city money that was part of paying salaries. I can't remember. It's just.
Well, they didn't give you any money this last year.
Remember when we had that meeting, and I think it was you, Kit, said that you wanted something figured out? Because one group pays a different level than Washburne. So it's convoluted and, yeah.
Okay, but that's not my question, my, my question is, is, um, out of your mill levy money, do you cover all the city portion of the salaries with that? Or, because I don't think we gave any money in the budget, did we?
Let, let me, let me offer that the only, the only the money, only the mill levy money coming in is only used for salaries.
Okay.
We pay all of their other expenses out of the general fund. So their mill levy comes in, goes into the library fund, the only other expense that comes back out of the fund is salaries.
But I don't know whether the mill levy totally covers the salaries or not.
Well, that was my, that was gonna be my next question.
Last year it did.
What?
Last year it did.
Okay, last year it did.
Okay.
Okay, and, okay, well, go back to my original thought after asking that question is, you know, we have a library board, and they have their own mill levy, so I think the library board should decide, you know, what they're gonna pay their librarians because they know what they have to spend, you know, and they gotta make it fit in there, otherwise, if it doesn't fit in there, then they need to come up with some other way to get some money. You know, because we cover all the other expenses of that building. And I think that's, you know, it's kind of like the park board, we don't tell the park board what to pay, you know?
Yeah.
Their people, they, they have their own board, they figure that out.
But we also don't pay, I'm sorry, but we, we also don't pay their draw off of their mill levy to pay their salary. So it's kind of different because that money comes in here, you know, if you guys did your own payroll, which, I mean, I don't mind doing payroll, but, um, you know, we just send out the quarterly payments to everybody else, so it's just a straight pass-through, where this situation is a little bit unique because we do their payroll, so we retain the mill levy.
Right, I understand that, but they would decide on.
How is that different than if we just hired an accountant to?
You know, pay an accountant?
Yeah.
It's no different than what you guys, you know, what you had done before, because I don't know if before, did, did, when you had Dwight doing it, did Melissa just pay quarterlies? Did, did the library just receive that income?
Yeah, I don't know if it was quarterly or if it was once a year, I don't know. I didn't do the books then.
No, and then the park board also has other, you know, revenues coming in too. You know, don't they get quarterly payments from, what, some kind of, what is it, sales tax or something, or, what do they get?
From, from the city?
No, from the state.
They get some sales dues.
I don't know what they get from the state, Adam, do you know?
Well, I know, I know it used to be, they used to come into here and then I got transferred over to the park board, and I did that four times a year.
Yeah, but it's like the library does, we have state aid that comes in, and it comes to the city, and it comes through.
Oh, you get state aid too, for the library, oh.
State aid you have to qualify for on a yearly basis.
That's not for salaries though, right, that's for, okay. I'm probably even out my thought.
I'm thinking if we can, um, to get back to your question of last meeting, and I'm not really prepared to answer whether we can get McLean Mercer to, to, to not be, be paying any. And I'm not sure we want them to not be, actually, but really, all I was prepared to do tonight is to tell you we have two assistant librarians, and we'd like them to start tomorrow.
Well, you know, another question I had was, um, I watched the meeting from last month when I wasn't here, and, um, you know, if you get, McLean Regional Library, McLean versus Regional Library to pay the city, you know, and then we give you a check, well, then, then does somebody qualify for health insurance? Because everything's coming from the city then, or how does that work, see?
Yeah.
You got a lot of variables there to.
Yeah, I do, for reasons why we did not do that when we hired Liz, but frankly, I don't, I still haven't found what those reasons were.
Yeah.
And I even.
So do we need to figure out the salary, or does the library board?
Here's my best suggestion, that we, we offered them the position at a salary of ten dollars an hour, with the idea that we would be reviewing salaries once they passed a starting wage level of expertise. If we can hire these two people at ten dollars an hour now, then I think we need next month to have another salary discussion about how we're gonna do it going forward.
And, and, and that's for above what the regional library pays?
Regional library does not pay assistant librarians at all.
Oh, they just pay the?
Just the, just the library.
Okay, and you have money in your budget for this, correct?
And the job sharing, we're not adding hours.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, you're not. Right, yeah, right, yeah, you're not, because that's what you have before.
And I just need to know, so I know how much to physically pay. That was my question, so, and then, you know, we have the directive to, on what to put on the checks.
And so if we can come up with following that directive for tonight, and revisiting the whole wage issue next month, I'd find that...
So in one month, do you wanna raise these wages that you're talking for these two ladies now?
No, I wanna, their starting wage I want to be ten dollars an hour, and that probably would be for any number of months until they are past a starting wage level. But I don't wanna wait until we're ready to offer them a raise before we decide how we're gonna do all the salaries. If it's a bigger issue than that, I'd like to come back next month and talk about that, and try and get that nailed down.
You basically wanna get them started working, so you get the library all that down.
Right, right, and I don't anticipate that next month we'll say, okay, we're giving them a raise, because it takes longer to become proficient than that. When you're only working, it's forty hours a month for the assistant librarian, and that's two people, so that's like twenty hours each.
I'll, I'll move that we make the starting pay for the two employees ten dollars a month, or ten dollars a hour.
Kate, you have a motion, you have a second?
I'll say it then.
Kate, any further discussion? Well, like I said earlier, I think, you know, that's why you have a board, you know, and they, you supposedly know which, what you have to spend, and, you know, you have a budget to keep, so.
Yeah.
Kinda go with their recommendation. Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
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 Good, welcome back to Buggy next month. Melissa put me on the agenda.
Uh, liquor relations, Lucy Clark today?
This is the new owner, he's requesting a classic speed, you know, established beer and wine open. And he has a lot of paperwork and, and what needs to do on our end.
And this kinda started because he's going to open up a pizza.
He's what?
He's opening up a pizza restaurant now.
Oh, really?
In the evenings.
Cool.
You got it.
Pizza beer, man.
I'll approve the liquor license for a Lucian Clark Cafe, make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Excuse me, flooring Memorial Hall Building. Who's in charge of that one?
Mr. Dickerson.
Mr. Dickerson, there we go.
Card Dwayne, or Kit.
It's got your name on it.
But anyway, the school's redoing their floors, and they ask if we would be interested in doing the, the Memorial Hall floor as well. And they ended up getting two bids, and, and this was the cheaper of the, of the two bids, the school is willing to put in thirty-five hundred dollars for the project, because they like to use it here and there, but then I guess it's kinda slippery. And then I guess Dwayne talked to the American Legion, and about donations as well, and I guess I'll let Dwayne explain that portion.
Quick question. You said you have two bids?
Yeah, the school, the school got two bids, and the cheaper of the one, they then got the bid for this one.
Oh, okay, so we only got one bid?
We only got one, yeah, yeah.
All right.
And I'm sorry, the school...
Because they went square footage, and then we just took the cheaper one.
You said thirty-five hundred from the school?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
Okay, go on.
On our, our budget for two thousand sixteen, the city, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for Memorial Building. I think we should... I think we should use part of that money, because there's some extra options on the bottom, if you look at your...
I saw that, yeah, okay.
School gives thirty-five hundred. I'd like to see that, the remainder coming out of the budget for the Memorial Building, down to ten thousand.
Okay, after the school is eight thousand sixty dollars, sixty dollars left?
No, but with the stage and repairs...
The stage.
There would be...
Oh, you're talking all these?
Yeah.
And that's not in the total, okay, what's that all come up, what's that total come up to?
After the school's portion, it looks like it'd be about eleven thousand five hundred.
With that bottom paragraph, with the stage is gonna add that up.
Yeah.
And we could take that bottom paragraph out of the Memorial Building budget.
Oh, so you're saying this bottom paragraph would just come out of the Memorial budget? Oh, okay.
Okay, you're, you're talking about the options would come out of Memorial Hall budget.
Yeah.
Then where does the other eight thousand sixty dollars come from?
Allegiant.
Allegiant.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
That's great.
You forgot to mention that.
You just did. Whatever's left, well, ten thousand Allegiant will pay for it. Because there's, they replace boards, they're fifty bucks a board.
Yeah, that's seven fifty.
And then, that bottom paragraph, sanitary finished stage, replace flat trim board at base of stage front. Additional repairs on a time and material basis, and that last one is pour water, warm finish.
So it'd be five thousand one hundred and fifty if we did that from the city budget?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, figuring fifteen boards, that fifteen dollars, okay, that's in there.
Depends on, I don't know how many I gotta do, but...
Well, and then it says additional repairs, I mean, so there might need to be more than that, really. You know, identified on a time and material basis.
Or we could just say...
Well, something, no sense, no sense taking fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars and something else, you know, for another two hundred dollars.
We get that ten thousand budget for the, budgeted for, for this year, the Allegiant, I mean, uh, city does. All I'm saying is, any less than ten thousand, Allegiant will donate that.
If I'm figuring this right, the city would pay five thousand one hundred and fifty, the school would pay three thousand five hundred, and the Allegiant would pay eight thousand sixty. Does that sound right?
Good.
Unless I forgot to carry something.
Ish, yeah. Is there like tax, while we're in tax temp, I guess? Do they have like a mobilization charge or anything, or?
Well, they're gonna be here, so, actually, this is, I know it doesn't seem like it, not only was it the cheaper bid, but it's also supposedly a thousand dollars off what their normal bill, bid would be, because they're here already, so, it's easy for them to say that, but...
And this would be like the stripes and the barbed wire stripes and everything?
Everything, yeah.
Other ones?
Yep. And they said too, it would be probably the first two weeks in July. And there's nothing scheduled as of right now in the Memorial Hall, so...
Faster than I wrote.
Faster.
Well, I'm...
Sorry, Jasper, I didn't throw this a lot of love to the topic, but it's just for the...
Yeah, that's cool, it'll be the city, and...
And actually, the city's option might be less.
So the rest of that money if I had the cities, I'd like to use.
Allegiant and...
Right, exactly, I agree.
See what it is. I guess we wanna save off of it.
Okay, do we have a motion on this? I was always asking, do we have a motion on?
No, not yet.
I know, I was asking, yeah. Does anybody want a motion, I, I said it, I'm sorry, I was...
I'll do it, can I agree for yours?
Um, something like that.
Okay, I motion to refinish the flooring on the Memorial Building at the cost of thirty-five hundred to the school, fifty-one fifty from the city, and eight thousand sixty from the American Legion.
I'll say it then.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Granted, you know, the city portion might change a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, we all know that, that's, that's a guess, so, okay, anything else? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
Some employees?
Um, some employees?
Two.
Uh, we had two last year, they had, they were both very, very, they were great, um, if we, however many we want and need, I think we still need two.
So two.
Um, I would like to advertise it the first two weeks in March, so that would be coming up. And I have had interest from both of the, the employees from last year, that they would both like to come back, so, that is good news.
Okay, I will make motion that we hired two some employees, if by chance we get the same two people back, I would say raising their wage a quarter per hour.
I'll second that.
For coming back.
I'll second that.
And if not, you know, they don't come back, then we'll have to discuss a wage for a new person.
If they still reapply and do all that, we still advertise and reply, so we motion to put the, an advertisement?
We still had the same starting wage over for them guys, didn't we?
Um, it was one, one was at fourteen and one was at fourteen twenty-five.
No, it wasn't.
So fourteen was our starting wage?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, is two weeks enough to advertise for that? Maybe.
That's if they're the same two people.
I think it is.
We can put on the access channel too, right, Cameron?
Okay, we have a second, do a motion, or, a motion, do we have a second? I don't remember.
I did.
Oh, yeah, you did, okay. Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jasper?
I don't have a whole lot tonight.
Good.
We're working on the two thousand sixteen project, and I have a meeting with the guys in the morning to kinda gauge where they're at, and I'd like to schedule a meeting with you guys to, to go through the plans.
Okay.
Probably early next week.
Like, you talking a day?
Tuesday, next, next Tuesday would be nice.
Uh, that would be the sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
I could not make it. I have two appointments in Miss Mark that morning, one at eight and one at nine.
How about seventeenth?
I mean, I can do it later, but I, you know, I can't do it right away in the morning. Uh, I can do it in the afternoon, whatever. Who's that?
It's you.
Oh, Trey.
Tell you, Colin, you have the room.
That's concentration, really.
I was reading, damn it.
I can do any day but Tuesday.
So are you talking a day meeting, an evening meeting, you talk...
Doesn't matter to me, I guess it, so the, I think Larry and Keith have come to the last meetings we've had. Not that I'm not inviting you, you're more than welcome to come too, but we gotta, can only have two of you there.
You charge too much.
Well, we can have more than that, we just gotta...
Call an actual meeting.
Yeah, which...
Later in the day would be preferred, because on Tuesday...
Well, I can make later in the day.
Four o'clock?
Sure.
Is that late now?
Yeah. Do you, does everybody wanna come to this, or what do you wanna do? I mean, if, if we do, wanna have more than two, actually, I, you know, quite honestly, if there's two of us, it, you know, we might have to have it as, as a meeting anyway, so... You know, control that for...
Tuesday the sixteenth, is that what you said?
Yeah, four o'clock.
Anybody else plan on, think they might plan on coming, or?
I work till four thirty, so I won't, but that's okay.
Kit, you working all day, or?
No, I could make it.
Okay. So we just wanna call it a special meeting, and then, because there's gonna be so many of us here?
How many, will there be, three, two?
Three, well, maybe Dwayne, four?
Let's just call a special meeting, just to cover bases.
I'll try for four.
I think.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Call a special meeting, okay, I'll do that right now, call a special meeting for Tuesday, February sixteenth at four o'clock, to discuss, and the thing is, you know, we, a special meeting, you have to discuss what's on the agenda.
Right.
So we'll be discussing the two thousand sixteen street project, street and utility project, okay?
And we said four?
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Jasper?
That's it.
Last time, I guess I was here, we had a two to two vote for this project, and that did go through then.
We had a special meeting after that.
I did make that, that's what I was wondering about, and I did go through then, okay, good, I was hoping so.
I was, yeah, I was...
That was gonna be my next question.
I asked your sound.
I wasn't, I'm glad. Thank you.
Hey, Adam, anything? Okay. Colin, anything else? Okay. Portfolios.
Okay, I think we pretty much covered my whole portfolio a little while ago, I'm sorry, Colin. But, I just wanted to get a point across, as far as the specials are gonna start to be coming up in November, and maybe we can get the word across that obviously the people's mortgage is going to change, because a lot of times your taxes don't just go up by the amount of that, it goes up double of that. So for example, if, if your amount's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars extra each year, for the first year, it might be three hundred dollars, so people can plan ahead. You know, so, maybe, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but just so we get that, maybe that word across.
It would be nice if we could somehow get that word out, though, I don't know what the proper way would be to do that, though.
Yeah, I don't know how to...
All right, question, the, the specials, I mean, that's obviously not county, that's city.
Right.
That doesn't show up on like the county website, does it? To where you can go on your look up.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, I just wondered if that way there was a place where people could go and say, okay, this is what it's gonna cost me this year.
Yeah, the special, the special assessment committee hasn't finished yet.
So we don't know the exact numbers?
We got the final numbers for the project last month, and so the committee met, and then we had one of the members that are out of town, that is out of town until March. So they will reconvene in March, and then they'll go through it, and then there's a process that we have to follow per state law. And so, once, once the special assessment committee decides that they are done, and they've divided it the best that they can, then it's published in the newspaper for two weeks, and we'll put it on the city website, and then, um, there's a public hearing, and then that's your opportunity to discuss further the amount that you're going to be assessed for the parcels. Um, and then after that, there's another chance for you to discuss it again at a hearing here with the city commission. Once they, once the commission certifies it, then, um, we send it up to the county, but you still wouldn't see anything until next November on your, you'll be on your next November tax statement.
Well, just, you know, think if there's someplace easy for the townspeople to go look, and that way it's not a surprise when...
There will be, there will be when, when they're all squared away and they're certified, then yes, all of the numbers will be out there and easily accessible for people.
And like I said, that's my main point, is just so people aren't shocked with their mortgage, you know, because it won't be just the, let's say, a hundred dollars, it'll a lot of times be doubled for the first year.
The first year will be doubled, right?
That's probably gonna catch up, yeah. Catch up, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of people are gonna be shocked by that.
Yeah, so hopefully we can get that word across, so we're not too shocked. Adam, sure, just.
I'm already shocked.
And that's all I got.
So if anybody, you're saying maybe has an idea, let's figure it out.
Exactly.
We'll leave that in your court.
Yeah. I don't know how to word, word it either, you know what I mean, to, whatever page or, or on the city website, it'd be, you know what I mean? How you would word it to tell people what I just said.
I don't know how you would word it without creating mass hysteria.
Can anybody figure out, like, there's an average based on a residential? Or is it quite a big variance?
Um, the water and the sewer are constant for everyone because of use tape, it's just merely whatever was paid is divided amongst the users that have were identified in the project. It's the, the street has the variables of the per square footage, your cap, how they're going to do all of that, but they're very close. But I would imagine they'll have one more meeting and then we'll move forward with the remainder of the process of going to public hearing and open discussion.
Yeah, well, Keith was saying, well, if you could say, well, if there's an average, you could publish that and say, on average, it's been booked two hundred dollars a first year, plus or minus a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
After they're certified, we can do a lot of that, but until they're certified, once they come to the city commission, if the commission doesn't like how the special assessment committee did it, then they can actually send it back to the committee to re-figure out.
Yeah.
So there isn't really any numbers that can be published or come out of the office until those numbers are actually certified.
Like she said, Joan could tell you, or the city could tell you how much your sewer's gonna be total, or how much your water's gonna be total, it's just.
Keith?
Nothing at this time?
No.
Nothing.
Go ahead.
No.
Okay, the only thing I have, um, I noticed there was, uh, one of the bills, there was a, um, what was it? Sam's Club, or whatever, by, like, keep you from the toilet paper. You know, I think we talked about this before, you know, you said it's a lot cheaper. You know, the thing is, I mean, we went around and got prices from the dollar store, from the grocery store, I think we need to buy in town when we can, you know, uh.
We absolutely can, we've been buying ever since I have been here, they've always bought from Dakota Supply. And they come on Thursday, we order it and then they bring it on like Thursday or Friday or whatever. And so, um, that's the way, that's the products that they've been ordering for the past ten, twelve years. So we were just trying to lower the prices by ordering from Sam's Club, cause we saw the dramatic difference in the prices.
But Dakota Supply isn't in town.
Yeah, I will, I will agree with them on this as far as the toilet paper or coffee. I think we probably wanna get that if we possibly can in town.
Cleaning supply.
Yeah, you know, as much as possible in town.
Absolutely, you know, I, I just think it's, you know, everybody's paying taxes, businesses are paying taxes and, you know, and I just think it's a way to go, so. I don't, I don't, do we need a motion on that?
I do appreciate that we're trying to save money, though.
Well, I know, I, I appreciate that too, but, you know, the city has to work it down too, so, um, do we need a motion on that, or is that just, uh, I don't think that you're doing?
I think we can probably figure that out.
Well, you know, you never know.
You don't ever know, yeah.
Question on this interbase one two year, I don't know what we have for diesel pickups, but there's a purchase for number two diesel. What do we have that takes number two diesel? Well, I wouldn't buy nothing but red fuel for a generator, anything that we got.
I think Unimog.
Does the Unimog, that one, I suppose, yeah.
That's licensed, you know?
Yeah.
Also, there was a few days where the, the die diesel was down up there and you couldn't buy it. And we, it was a pressing matter where we had to fill up, I think it was during a snowstorm or something.
Oh.
I can't remember if that was last month or not, but, yeah.
Oh, I forgot that Unimog was diesel. Just curious, no big deal.
I was gonna bring up another thing, bro, I, you know, last, uh, meeting from last month, you know, I talked about bleachers, possibly, and, um, even before Joan had mentioned it, I thought, you know, on the stage would be a good spot for some bleachers, you know, cause they do fold up right against the wall, you know. Just, we probably throw that out there, so that's all I have. You know, if we can get them.
Well, I will say if, if everybody wants the bleachers, like, just for the stage portion, um, the school, I believe, would pretty much give up to us, so.
I mean, definitely don't want them where the bands is during Memorial Day, I think that would be a terrible spot for them, but, you know, the, on the stage, they pull right up against the wall, they what, like, putting half away from the wall?
Right. They haven't decided yet either how they're gonna come apart, so.
Yeah.
That's gonna be another issue, I believe.
Okay.
They gotta tear them all completely down to get them out of there, you know, and we're gonna find somebody to.
Right, put them together.
Yeah.
Uh, to them.
Um, Wieda had a meeting today and they were discussing the lodging tax, uh, and how funds were going to be drawn and who was going to take care of that. Um, when the lodging tax ordinance was first started, it was decided that the sales and use tax committee would also serve as a, an oversight. But, um, we should probably come up with some guidelines for granting application, uh, minimum amount that you are willing, that you wanna keep in that fund. Just some guidelines for that particular fund that weren't spelled out in the ordinance, so if somebody wants to get going on that.
Um, well, let, let's, you know, review our ordinance, I mean, let's just, kind of, let's table it for next meeting, if that's okay. Uh, everybody think that's okay, uh, at the, uh, um, lodging tax.
And then, um, also just with, with the floor, I don't know if, at the floor at the Memorial Building, if, um, we will have to also now think about covering for the floor when it's rented out to, uh, different activities other than, uh, sporting events. So the tables and things that are, that go on to that floor, where we need to invest in the floor coverings like they do for, uh, old gym.
What do they have there?
Well, they have some sheets that they roll out that are probably, I don't know, two thirds the size of this room, they just roll them out.
Really?
Just tarp, kind of rubber matting, tarps?
Looks like rubber matting and then, and they just throw in the corner?
Real thick, like tablecloth almost, real thick.
But just something that we'll need, you know, we'll have to start thinking about is that.
And if you shoot your card during, call down to Bismarck Canvas, all the old tarps from semis and stuff like that come in, you can cut the earrings off and but it'll work well enough for lighting on the floor.
That would work for a wedding dance?
Well, you ain't gonna wanna cover it up for a wedding dance anyway, that's gonna be your downfall.
Actually, that's, the school does.
Do they?
Dances on that day, cause it's, that stuff is just, just like this.
It doesn't move, right?
No, it doesn't move and it's.
Where a tar, a tar would move, I'm assuming. That's all.
It's pretty heavy stuff.
Yeah.
You get enough, enough of it laid down, a big enough area laid down, it ain't gonna move.
Yeah, definitely something to think about.
Just something.
A lot of that stuff to give away.
Free for sharing? Any else? Uh, bills, everybody have tests, go through the bills? If not, go through them. Write some notes, huh?
Did everyone through? I moved that we accept for bills.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of bills?
Aye.
Aye.